Next item on the agenda is Housing Element of the General Plan.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, this is the Housing Element Update. So this evening, we're going to talk about the update process and demographic trends and housing characteristics and housing market trends and existing resources and next steps. The Housing Element is one of seven mandated general plan elements, and it addresses existing and projected housing needs for all economic segments of the community. And the California Department of Housing and Community Development will review it, and they better certify it.[46.82][46.82](Laughter). So this planning period, we now need to plan for people with developmental disabilities. And the planning cycle is meshed with the SB 375 Sustainable Community Strategies Plan Bay Area, so it's an eight-year planning period. And we get streamlined review because we already did our Housing Element last time. The Housing Element is officially part of the General Plan, although it is in a separate document. The rest of the General Plan was adopted in 2009, and our current Housing Element was adopted and certified in 2010. And we've done some implementation reports since then, one of which was fairly recently. So the process, we have pretty much updated and reviewed the existing Housing Element, and then we're getting some feedback, including this evening. And then we'll do a draft Housing Element, get some more feedback, send it to the state for review, and then come back to you for adoption hearings, and then back to them for certification. So we go to the Housing Committee next week, and then we have a City Council Study Session in April. And then we produce our draft and have public review of that, and then we go back to the Housing Committee again and back to you for a hearing to approve it, to send to the state, and then to the City Council for a hearing. Then we send it to the state for review in July and hear from them by September. And in the fall, we have adoption hearings here and at the council, and then we send it to them early next year for certification. The Housing Element addresses the regional housing needs. And how that comes about is that the state determines how much each region's number is, and then the Regional Council of Governments, Association of Bay Area Governments in this case, allocates that to the jurisdictions, which is a long and painful process. And then the allocation is distributed among income categories, too. So the city of Emeryville has 1,498 units. It was 1,492, but six got added in the process. And we have a range of affordability levels that we need to plan for and allow for and zone for. And affordable housing is like half of the units that are in our arena. So I'd like to introduce Kim Obstfeldt. She is our consultant doing the Housing Element, and she'll talk about the workshop and other aspects.
Thank you. Good evening. Glad to be here. So like Diana said, we are up and running on the Housing Element Update. We started in January and have been able to really dig in on the needs assessment. We've started our public outreach campaign, looking at constraints and starting to review some policy aspects. So I want to just talk you through our findings from the community workshop and then run you through some of the findings from the data analysis. So we held a community workshop in this room on March 13. It was attended by approximately 14 members of the community, including some planning commissioners, which we appreciate, some members of the Housing Committee, as well as representatives from community organizations, service providers, and Emeryville residents. We presented some of the data that I'll kind of present to you next, but we also held discussions. And it was primarily about trying to find out what the existing needs are, aside from what the numbers tell us, but what it feels like and what experiences are and what they're hearing from their neighbors and experiencing themselves. So we kind of divided up that input and wanted to just talk you through it into two categories, the first one being housing-related needs, and the next one, vision and ideas. One theme that came about, and we certainly heard that earlier this evening as well, but was the need for housing and amenities that are appropriate for families with children, the need for homeless services and facilities, housing for persons with disabilities. Senior housing came up a couple of times, specifically affordable housing for low-income seniors, expanded public transportation, more parks and recreation opportunities. And there was a call for neighborhood identities, really thinking about how with all of the new development, our neighborhoods come together and we create a sense of place, as well as quality-of-life features. Shoot. I just went back. Okay, got it. Sorry. Sorry, this thing's a bit jumpy. My gosh. Okay, vision. So the vision for housing, and we sort of said, you know, in the next 10 years, what does it look like in Emeryville? What is the housing situation? What have we been able to create? What sort of feel have we put together? And the responses were people-friendly neighborhoods that were walkable and bikeable, homes that were energy-efficient and environmentally sensitive, family-friendly, again, that theme, I think, seems to be recurring, opportunities and services, and housing that's appropriate and affordable to lower-income families and seniors, creative vertical and mixed-use housing, more owner-occupied housing, and we'll go into that a little bit more in terms of the data, but someone threw out the number of getting our ownership rate up to 50% as a potential kind of target, again, with neighborhood identities and that sense of place, as well as quality-of-life features. Oh, my gosh. Hopefully, I can stop doing that. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Also, high-quality transit, improved connections over freeways and rail lines. I heard that discussed earlier as well. There was a concern that the city is really divided by the rail and the freeway, thinking about creative ways to bridge that gap. Housing, specifically family-friendly and affordable housing for families linked to parks, transit, and schools, a greater diversity in the unit types and sizes, improved accessibility, specifically features for disabled persons and seniors, and some sort of funding source to step in where redevelopment agency left off on providing assistance for the development of affordable units, some kind of in lieu fee or impact fee. Oh, gosh. This is not working well for me. Okay, let me go back to this. Just tread carefully. So I want to go through some of the initial data that we've collected regarding demographic trends. Oh, my gosh. I know it's late, and you don't want to go through this slide this many times. Okay, let me get back. Sorry. Oh, thanks. Oh, thank you. It's not the same on the Mac.
There should be little arrows in the lower-left corner of the screen that you can use to click on.
Okay. All right. I think I'm good with the wheel at this point. Sorry, guys. Population growth. Population has been increasing rapidly for the past 40 years. We saw an increase of 46% from 2000 to 2010. A-BAG projects continued growth. They just put out projections in 2013. They're looking at a 34% increase from 2010 to 2020, and a total population of 21,000 by 2040. As of 2010, from the census, the total population figure was 10,080. That's been updated by the Department of Finance with a 2013 estimate of 10,269 residents. Just for comparison purposes, nearby jurisdictions from 2000 to 2010, Alameda County as a whole had a population increase of 5%. Berkeley had an increase of 10%, and Oakland actually had a decrease of 2%. So we're trending well above our neighbors and the county as a whole. Household size. The average number of persons per household really held steady from 2000 to 2010 at 1.71 to 1.76. A-BAG projections assume that the household size will continue to hover at 1.7 to 1.8 persons per household through 2040. The average in Emeryville, as you can see in the comparison table there, is low compared to other jurisdictions. It's actually the lowest in Alameda County. It's low compared to Alameda County as a whole and the state of California. Population age. The median age in Emeryville also held steady from 2000 to 2010 at around 35 years of age. This is the same as the statewide median and a bit lower than the Alameda County median, which is 36.6. While the population number grew significantly from 2000 to 2010, the age composition was pretty stable from 2000 to 2010. The largest percentage change was in the population age 25 to 34. In 2000, this group made up 22% of the population, and in 2010, they accounted for approximately 29% of the population. The elderly population, those aged 65 and older, remained stable at about 10%. And children and young adults, those aged 19 and under, made up approximately 12% of the population. And that's a figure we want to dig in a little bit deeper on in this next slide. Again, a point of note in the age composition is the relatively small population of children and young adults aged 19 and under when compared to other nearby jurisdictions. In Berkeley, Albany, and Oakland, and Alameda County as a whole, young people under 19 make up 21 to 26% of the population as of 2010, which is, of course, much higher than the 12% in Emeryville. Race and ethnicity. Take a quick look. The population is approximately 40% white, which is down slightly from 42% in 2000. 17% black or African-American, down slightly from 19% in 2000. 27% Asian, up slightly from 25% in 2000, and 9% Hispanic, which has been the same from 2000 and 2010. One note on the Hispanic is they've released a different way of calculating. It used to be counted as an ethnicity, where you could be Hispanic but be of any other race. So you may have seen numbers in the past that looked a little bit different from that one. This is Hispanic alone. Housing characteristics. The Emeryville housing stock increased by 56% from 2000 to 2010, from 4,200 units to 6,541 units. The majority of the units added were in multifamily structures of five or more units. They made up 1,827 units as the change. That was 78% of the units added were in multifamily of five or more. As of 2010 -- oh, gosh, I'm on the wrong slide. Sorry about that. As of 2010, the majority of the Emeryville housing stock is in multifamily units, 87%. And again, just for comparison purposes, in Berkeley, the percentage that's multifamily is 53%, and in Oakland, it's 52%. Housing types. Slightly over half of all of the units in Emeryville are one-bedroom, and another 13% are studios. Only about 5% of the existing housing stock has three or four bedrooms. Housing occupancy. You know, in keeping with the data that we discussed regarding household sizes and unit sizes, it's not surprising that about 50% of homes are occupied by one person. However, while the number of homes occupied by one person is up, the percentage is down. It was 55% in 2000, and again, it's 50% in 2010. The number and percentage of two- and three-person households have increased slightly since 2000. Oh, my gosh. I'm so sorry. Housing tenure. Emeryville has more renters than homeowners. As of 2010, approximately 65% of housing units were renter-occupied. The homeownership rate has decreased slightly from 2000 to 2010. This may be due to the addition of rental units to the housing inventory, as well as fallout from the housing crisis and recession. A lot of jurisdictions throughout the Bay Area saw a slight decrease in their homeownership rate over that period. As you can see, there's greater balance between homeowners and renters. If you look at Alameda County as a whole, as of 2010, there was 53% owner occupancy for Alameda County as a whole. Okay, a little bit on housing market trends. Median home prices really have jumped in the Bay Area from 2012 to 2013. Initial numbers from 2014 indicate that that's a continuing trend. It's going strong. Housing inventories in the Bay Area and nationwide are down. There's just not as much inventory and housing stock on the market, which is driving prices up. In addition, interest rates have been at historic lows, which is also driving prices up and getting more buyers onto the market. For Emeryville, the median home sales price increased nearly 50% from 2012 to 2013. There was a similar increase in Oakland at 49%. And for Alameda County as a whole, prices went up 33%. To look at this another way, you can see that the median home price in Emeryville tends to be much more affordable than other jurisdictions, although the trends are kind of the same. That's attributable to the lower or the smaller-sized units and the larger number of condominiums. Okay, and the last piece of housing market data we want to take a look at is rent prices. We did an informal survey, which included a lot of the major rental developments, including Archstone, Avenue 64, Iconet Doyle, Iconet Park, Courtyards, and a few others. The averages, as you can see, are pretty high. Studios are averaging at $1,804 a month. Three-bedrooms, two-bath units at the higher end are going for an average of $3,427 a month. As of the fourth quarter of 2013, Cassidy Turley did a study of the multifamily vacancy rate in the East Bay and found it to be at 3.8%. A healthy housing market on the rental end is typically 6%. So that lower vacancy rate, there's not a lot of room to go, there's not a lot of empty units, and of course, that's driving prices up. And then just to give you an idea of affordability, for a four-person household at the moderate income level, based on the income limits that are set by HCD, a four-person household would earn $112,000, a maximum of $112,200 a year. If you back that out and they spent 30% of their monthly income on rent, and really, that 30% should also encapsulate utilities, but leaving that out, they could afford a rent of $2,805. So they could potentially get in to a two-bedroom on the lower end of the market, but would be really pushing their budget. The real problem comes in for a low-income household. Someone who is earning the maximum of the low-income category would earn $67,600 a year for a family of four. The maximum rent that they could -- affordable rent that they could afford would be $1,690 a month, which wouldn't even get them into a studio. So we have some real problems to address with affordability, specifically on the lower end. Overpayment for housing can result in lack of money for things like high-quality foods, education, transportation resources, or it can result in overcrowding, which deteriorates units and creates problems with neighbors. Or we lose those folks, and they end up moving out of the city of Emeryville because they're simply priced out. So affordability is going to be a big issue to address during this Housing Element. And with that, I will turn it over to someone who can operate this much better than I can. Catherine is just going to talk a little bit about existing housing resources in the city.
I don't even use that. Hi, Catherine Furpa, Housing Coordinator. Going to talk initially about sort of the citizen oversight and the processes and the ways that people can get involved in housing policy. At the City Council level, they do approve some housing projects, some development projects, and they also adopt policies and regulations. Planning Commission, yourselves, work on development project approval and recommendations on planning policy and regulations to the City Council. The Housing Committee also works on housing policies and programs and make recommendations about specific projects. Community Preservation Committee mostly works on code issues and issues around the housing quality. And the Housing Advisory and Appeals Board, which is you as well, works on housing code violation complaints and appeals. Within the city, the staff resources, there's the Planning and Building Department. They plan for the housing developments and other developments, review projects and process permits. They ensure that the new developments meet requirements. The Economic Development and Housing Department works on affordable housing set-aside ordinance and works with the below-market-rate units that come out of that ordinance or with other funding sources. We do funding coordination. We work on the first-time homebuyer program, rehabilitation loan program, and foreclosure prevention. The financial resources that come to affordable housing are the low-income housing tax credits, and we just finished a project with those at the Ambassador Housing. We also get Cal Home and Cal HFA grant funds from the state. Those actually are for rehab, first-time homebuyer, and also large projects. Large housing projects can apply directly. And first-time homebuyers can apply directly for Cal HFA, some Cal HFA funding. We have the Community Development Block Grant, which is a federal funding source. We use that for services and also rehab. And home funds are another thing that developers can apply to directly to the county, and the city represents the urban county right now on the home policy board. We also get EPA grants and other remediation funds, and we work with nonprofit lenders and for-profit community lending divisions to bring funding to the projects. The other resources is the Housing Authority of the County of Alameda, HACA. They provide housing choice vouchers or Section Eights. We have about 110 people households that make use of housing choice vouchers. In the city of Emeryville, a lot of those are actually in BMR units. So there's kind of a layering of resources in those units, and we have two public housing projects here in the city. The other people that work are advocacy organizations, and we also provide fair housing services through our CDBG funding. The next Housing Committee meeting is Wednesday, April 2, and we will be reviewing the Housing Element and sort of a study session, looking really deeply at each of the policies and procedures, policies and programs, excuse me. And then we'll have a City Council Study Session on April 22, again, really delving into the details of the Housing Element.
Just a couple of other items of note. We do have a page on the city's website dedicated to the project. We're posting information there, posting all of our PowerPoint slides and any materials from any meetings. And on that page, there is a link to a survey. We've launched an online survey in an effort to broaden our participation efforts. We realized that not everyone is able to come to an evening meeting or attend a public hearing. So in hopes of getting more information from a more diverse population of people, we are trying to drive traffic to that survey site. So if you can help us promote that, we would greatly appreciate it. With that, I will stop trying to use this PowerPoint and open it up for any questions. We're happy to hear any comments that you may have, any policy direction, and any questions that you have on the Housing Element itself and the update process. Just kind of want to open it up.
I just have a couple of questions. Is the survey something you'd like us to complete as well?
That would be great. Yes, please do.
And this is kind of a rhetorical question. I don't know if anyone can answer this, but we talked about how much home or how little homeownership we have in Emeryville compared to rental. So how does the city promote homeownership when the developers won't build for sale housing? And what can we do as a planning commission to mitigate that? Does anyone have any suggestions on that?
There's a couple of things that we're looking at. There is a lot of buildings that were built for homeownership that are rented. So our staff is actually looking at helping the HOAs or even the owners of those units turn them back into ownership housing. And I think you'll hear more about that coming forward. The other thing is, I think you noticed that the developers said that they're going to map the NADIS-SATE. I think that a lot of the rental projects that are coming forward, they want to be rental for 10 years, and then they sell to get past the defect litigation point. So I think that even though we're seeing a lot of rental housing, I think in the future, we'll see that turning to ownership. The first project I think that will probably do that, it will be Oak Walk. That was also -- that was actually built as an ownership project, switched to rental.
Well, it didn't have a map recorded on it?
I think it did.
Yeah, because it was ready to roll.
And I think both icon projects were built as condos as well.
Right. So I think that we'll start seeing some change. The builder's defect thing is renting it out for 10 years is a way of getting beyond that for developers. And so I think we'll see some of these projects turning into homeownership, especially as the prices start to go up. I do want to say something about the pricing in Emeryville. Because a lot of our homeownership housing is in condominiums, the sales price doesn't really take into account that part of the housing cost is HOA dues. So when you compare it to other cities that have a lot of single-family homes, it's not exactly accurate. So that, you know, if you were to adjust all those cities for their HOA dues, that the multifamily ownership, you'd see us with a little bit more parity, not entirely, but some.
So when you go between the rental property and the condo conversion, how does that fit in with the BMR set-aside? Because I know that you can't do that for rental, but you can do it for condos. So how do you?
So they then become subject to the inclusionary zoning ordinance at --
Is there any possibility of taking away the requirement of affordable units in condominiums so it matches rental? Do you think that would help?
You mean because the rental is 15 and the ownership is 20? Is that what you're saying?
The rental doesn't have to provide any affordable units. Condominium does because of the Palmer Act.
Well, so under Palmer, anything that has.
Condominiums, would that encourage more to be built?
Perhaps. But when is the linkage fee coming?
Excuse me?
When is the linkage fee coming to planning?
Yeah. At your next meeting, I believe, you'll be having a study session on impact fees. And affordable housing impact fee will be one of the proposed impact fees. So you'll have a thorough presentation and discussion on that at your next meeting.
So that'll -- you'll see a balance.
My question is actually exactly the inverse of that question. So if a rental project is condo-mapped, doesn't that make the individual airspace -- I mean, doesn't that make the airspace units individually owned, even if they're owned by the same entity, which would then -- and then they would then be subject to the Affordable Set-Aside Program?
Watch me turn to the attorney.
Your question is, if a condo map is recorded on a project that was intended to be rental, does that make it subject to our Affordable Housing Set-Aside Ordinance?
As an ownership project, because each unit is owned separately?
Yes. What?
No, it's being rented. He's saying.
Yes. If it's a condo project, it's subject to our Affordable Housing Set-Aside Ordinance. If it's -- if there's 200 units and they're mapped as 200 separate parcels, and they are all owned by one housing developer who rents them all out, just as if it was a rental project, that's a condo. It's subject to our Affordable Housing Set-Aside Ordinance.
So Oak Walk is, in effect, has affordable units in it because it's a condo?
Well, Oak Walk was approved a long time ago, before the Palmer decision. And I believe it does have affordable units in it.
Any unrecorded building now, unrecorded condo map on a building would trigger affordable units when the map was recorded?
Unrecorded?
A building that doesn't have a map on it now, an apartment building?
Oh, when they --
If they were to condo-convert.
Well, more than that, if an existing rental project were to convert to condos, they would be subject to our condo conversion regulations as well, which has a lot of provisions about rental assistance, tenant assistance, and -- about rental assistance, tenant assistance, and...
Relocation, yeah.
Yeah, lots of other things besides just the affordability requirements.
It's not likely to happen very easily.
Conversion of an existing building to condos? It rarely happens.
So we have a lot of new buildings going up that probably will never be condominiums?
Depends on pricing.
Unless they're mapped from the outset. We always advise developers, if they intend to record a condo map, they ought to do it before they get a certificate of occupancy.
How many of these apartment buildings have condo maps on them since the Palmer Act?
There hasn't been any built. Only Oak Walk was our last rental built.
Right. I don't think 64th and Christie, Paper Mill, Bakery Lofts, none of those have condo maps, as far as I know.
So 3,900 Adeline, Pat Parkside, and 64th and Christie all were subject to the inclusionary housing.
Oh, that's true. Yes, that's true.
They were subject to the rental.
They were approved before the Palmer decision.
Can the Planning Commission require a recordation of a condo map as a condition of approval for a project?
You cannot require it, I don't believe. The applicant can voluntarily agree to do it if they want to. You can strongly suggest it. That's my understanding. And the city attorney is...
I would have serious concerns about the commission trying to impose that condition And would not advise that you do so.
Is that clear? The question, these letters that we received, were they just information or were there some action we were supposed to take or ask that any of this stuff was included into what we do or...
Disability.
The ACEB letter is actually about the developmentally disabled. That gets worked. We just wanted to show you that that actually has to get worked into the policies and programs.
And you guys are working on that?
Yes.
Okay.
And so on the... to follow on to that question, so I understand you'll be able to quantify the number of persons that live in Emeryville with disabilities and analyze their housing needs, but what are some strategies that you're thinking about now in terms of providing housing for people with developmental disabilities?
Well, we're looking at sites. There's two ways you can do it. If your work... if we put out an RFP for an affordable housing project, for instance, we could put in the RFP that there's an expectation that you will provide this type of housing. It could be developmentally disabled. It could be for formerly homeless. Any of the special needs that are called out in the housing element could go into the RFP. The recent RFP out at 3706 San Pablo is looking at hopple units, housing for persons with AIDS and HIV, and any future projects that we bring forward. If you do 100% development, special-needs housing, either it's for formerly homeless or some other disability, usually they're smaller projects. And so we'll be looking at sites for those smaller projects.
I can add to that, too. I've met with a couple of the regional centers. There's 21 regional centers scattered throughout the state of California that are contracted with the state to serve persons with developmental disabilities. So most of the data that you're seeing is coming from those centers. It's a list of their clients, basically, or a summary of their clients. And for the most part, they contract with small housing and service providers, so they connect their clients with those housing providers, who then go out and identify specific units and try to match individuals with specific needs to the right housing situation. So usually, they're just looking at a single-family home and then pairing, you know, three or four individuals who can live together, and then making sure that services are visiting that site on a regular basis. And it certainly... it depends on the severity of their disability. But we were talking earlier about some standards that they're encouraging universal design features or things that would create more general opportunities for units that are accessible. They look for units that are in close proximity to transit and units that are well-served by services and amenities where they can walk, basically. But they like for their clients to be integrated within the community. The state has long been moving away from the large institutions. There's still one in Sonoma County, but they're actually on their way out with that.
We do have one project, Magnolia Terrace. It was five units for developmentally disabled.
What are the two... you mentioned that there were two public housing facilities. What are...
Emery Glen and Ocean Avenue Courts? Ocean Avenue? There's a very small one that is for families with a disabled member. It's, I believe, six units. And then there's the Emery Glen, which is 38 units, I believe, or something.
And so those properties are held by who?
The Housing Authority of the County of Alameda, HACA.
Okay.
That one down the street from you. Have any other questions?
No questions.
We don't take any action, do we, Charlie?
No, it's... this is just an opportunity for you to provide input as to what... if you have anything you'd like to see addressed in the housing element. Also an opportunity for the public to comment. I don't know if you want to open it up for public comment. I doubt that you'll get very many. But, yeah, no, there's no specific action. It's just an opportunity for input.
Yeah. Open it to public comment. Seeing nobody come forward, we'll close the public comment. Thank you very much.
I think staff has done a good job. I think we're going in the right direction.